Welcome to the Town Council Meeting, September 18th. Let's call to order a pledge allegiance led by Councilor Moncory.
My chair?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilor Inman.
Here.
Councilor Callow.
President.
Councilor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councilor Thierry.
Yeah.
Councilor Sardo.
Here.
Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
Councilor Conti.
Present.
Vice President Moncory.
Here.
President Beckham.
Present. I want to take a motion to accept the minutes of the August 21st Town Council Meeting, as circulated.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Stand. I was not there.
One up, second.
I think a few people were. Yeah, just make sure you...
Okay, we have several presentations this evening, and I would love if you could keep it down to a minimum because we have a lot to accomplish tonight, okay? With that, we will start out with the first presentation from the Mothers Out Front regarding the plastic bag ban.
Okay. I'm timing myself. Okay, thank you. I'm Suzanne Hitchcock-Bryan, and we are all, none of us are with Mothers Out Front, Winthrop Mothers Out Front, and we are mothers and others, and we mobilize for a livable climate for all our children, for all children, and we are here to ask Winthrop to join 81 other Massachusetts communities, including our neighbors Boston, Cambridge, Brookline, Swamscott, and pass a single-use plastic bag ban, and there are many reasons to do this, which I will get to, but tonight I want to talk about action. I would like to forego doing the gloom for the most part, and yes, we need to address urgency, but it is action and knowing that we can act that will yield hope, and we need hope. Individual action is important, but we need strong policy action to have a significant impact. So let's ponder National Geographic's question: Planet or plastic? Are we looking at the tip of the iceberg? What is our choice here in Winthrop? What is our action? Effective policy can help. So let's talk about plastic, which was starting to take off in the '60s. Do you remember the famous quote from that movie, The Graduate? I'm looking at you wrong. It's one word. Who remembers it?
I miss the word.
Plastics. Oh, plastics, yes. And in 1979, plastic bags arrived, but 50 years after The Graduate, the tagline should be, "We're drowning in plastic." Now, we would be remiss if we ignored the composition of plastic bags, and most plastic bags in the United States are made from natural gas. Well, not quite natural, is it? So according to National Grid, 80 percent of our gas in Massachusetts is fracked, and we can come back another time and talk about the public health and economic opportunities of renewables. We'll come back another time, but please, tonight, just know that with fracked gas, we get a double whammy. Gas is methane, and it can leak and explode, as we know unfortunately, so readily what happened in Lawrence, and then when we burn it, it releases carbon dioxide. Okay, so I'm a nurse. I'm an advocate for public health. We just came from the Board of Health, who, by the way, they have passed a motion to approve -- to support a single-use plastic bag ban. So that was very, very great, coming from the Board of Health. Okay, so, as a nurse, I feel obligated to say this just one time. Okay. Here is a trajectory. The dark line is carbon dioxide released into the atmosphere from the Industrial Revolution to present, except now we're over 400, and the red and the blue mark the temperature. They actually track. As we increased the carbon dioxide, we increased our temperature. So our air is warmer, our oceans are warmer, and the Arctic is warmer, and those three elements contribute to what we're seeing with Florence: much heavier rainfall and a very slow-moving system. But there are other reasons to ban plastic bags beside the fossil fuel use. So litter. Okay, these pictures were taken a couple weeks ago. They're all Winthrop beaches, and we certainly know that plastic bags harm wildlife. I know you've all seen the photos, horrific photos. We don't need to belabor that point, but bags in the ocean are mistaken for food. And just as an aside, the Friends of Winthrop Beach had a slogan contest, and this was the winner, and it'd be on T-shirts, and the Girl Scouts have a new badge. It's called Environmental Stewardship, and Winthrop middle school teacher and scout leader, Erica Foley, has invited us to speak to her scouts in November, when they resume meetings, which we look forward to. Okay, so, less than 5 percent of plastic bags are recycled. They end up as litter or trash, or they're mistakenly put in the blue recycle bin, and man can that mess up the entire recycle load. Plastic bags don't really biodegrade, but they can photo degrade, and they break down into tinier and tinier microplastics, and these can end up in food. So we have a problem. What are we going to do? What action are we going to take? And we are urging you to pass an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags, and we have given you in your packet two sample model ordinances, one city, one town. I don't understand. It seems like there's a hybrid governance in Winthrop. Sorry, I don't personally understand it, but I've given you one of each town and city. And we've also given you a designing and implementing the bag law, and also a fact sheet, and those are all thanks to Sierra Club. 234 Winthrop residents have signed a petition to ban single-use plastic bags. Thirty-four of them are online. Here's the rest, which Karina has, and Mothers Out Front and Friends of Belle Isle are in talks to discuss some grant funding for reusable bags for merchants. We want people to BYOB. Bring your own bag. Okay, now, the single most motivating factor for people to remember to bring their bag is a small fee. However, only Massachusetts cities can impose that fee, so I'll leave you to figure that out. Okay, and just a reminder about the importance of cities and states can be the first line of defense against plastic pollution, the first line of defense against global warming. Not doing anything is no longer acceptable, and banning a single-use plastic bag is an important and easily implemented first step toward meaningful change. Okay. And here's Karina.
Hi, I'm Karina Campobasso. I'm in Precinct 3. I'm a member of Mothers Out Front Winthrop and also the Vice President of the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh. So before the dedication of the Belle Isle Marine Ecology Park, they held a cleanup at the -- right around that area, and I participated in the cleanup, and I pulled out no fewer than 10 plastic bags from our very own beautiful marsh, and I just want to show you one sample of them, and you can see Suzanne's point about how they break down and get into smaller and smaller pieces where sea creatures and other marsh creatures eat them, and then they get into our -- into the food chain, and they go up the food chain, and we eat the food, and right now, humans -- 90 percent of humans have plastic in their bloodstreams. Just as an aside, sea salt is one of the worst substances that has plastic in it, not necessarily plastic bags, but I also wanted to show you this. When I was picking up one plastic, as I picked it up, during the cleanup, it broke up into my -- in my fingers. So they just get smaller and smaller, and they get eaten. So I hope that you will consider the plastic bag ban. I think we have a lot of support in Winthrop, the 230 people who signed the -- those are the only people -- only the people we got to, so I hope that you will consider that bag. It will also help the DPW, too, if we do that ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to Mothers Out Front for all the great work you do. This is certainly a very, very crucial problem, not only in Winthrop, but in the United States around the world.
Right.
I know there's many organizations that have been put together to combat all of the waste that's in the sea, beautiful places in the Caribbean, the coral reefs. People can't even swim in them because it's just full of trash. So we will certainly take that under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Comments? Yes?
Yes, I have a question. When you speak about single-use plastic bags...
Yes, yes.
And you say that those are not recyclable, as opposed to perhaps a more heavy-duty plastic bag that some stores might give to a customer, those would be recyclable and those would not be banned?
Okay, so, here's the -- I've given you model ordinances, and the model doesn't want to go how many millimeters thickness or whatever. They really would like to say, "No." No, but yes. So the plastic -- if you've been to Stop &amp; Shop, they have a place where you can return plastic bags. They're not supposed to have any labels or anything on them, but very few get -- they don't do it, and I've seen tons of blue bins with plastic bags sticking out of them, and I know that messes up a recycle load.
Why is that?
Why? Because they can't sort. Well, maybe Steve could address that.
It's because of the machinery.
It's the machinery. It gets -- it comes it all up. So they -- then they say, "Sorry, we're not taking any of that." I'm afraid that's why China actually changed.
Well, I know that Mr. President wants to keep these short and brief, but I have one more question, please.
Yes.
You spoke about how it supports global warming. You're talking about the production of these single-use plastic --
Yes, yes.
Not the -- nothing to do with us as far as banning them?
Well, here's the thing. If all our plastic bags are ended -- ending up in the trash, Winthrop's trash goes to an incinerator, plastic bags are burned.
Okay.
Right?
So both ends, both ends.
Yeah.
Both ends.
Production from petroleum and...
And then the disposal.
The whole life cycle. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can anyone here in support of the plastic bag ban please stand up, so you don't -- the support we have. Yes, you -- no, you stand right up. You're standing.
Thank you very much.
You can use my wireless clipper anytime you want.
Yes.
Mary Ann Schruckey, Precinct 1. If I may respond a little bit to your questions on the plastic bags, Mr. McDuffie, this is just the beginning. We're going to start off with the single-use plastic bags, and then we're going to be moving more and more away from the usage of any plastics. I think you all have heard about in Southeast Asia, in their oceans, there is literally an entire landform of plastics, and people who are poor actually build their huts on this plastic, and just recently, within the last few weeks, there has been a scientist that has discovered another landform of plastics in the Pacific Ocean, the size of Texas. So I'm just saying to you, the landform in Southeast Asia is above, almost like above the ocean, but the one in the Pacific, I believe, is just below the surface. So as we can hear, we have got to work together, and the first step is the single-use plastic bags, because it causes the most damage to us, the sea life, and animal life. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just very quickly, my name is Cindy Luthy, and I'm also a member of Mothers Out Front. I'm also the New England Director for Clean Water Action and Research of the Waste Stream. In marine studies that we've conducted shows that plastic bags and a few other -- very few other plastic products like straws make up the vast majority of the marine plastic pollution problem. So this may look like a big problem that's hard to solve, but tonight, we're actually targeting the exact right piece of the problem, particularly for a marine community like Winthrop. So with my hat on for Mothers Out Front and my hat on for Clean Water Action, I say, "Thank you for considering this," and go, go, go.
Thank you. Go.
I congratulate the effort. I would like to share with you, if you go on your computers and you go onto the app -- I belong to four oceans, four oceans. Oh, you've got your bracelet. Congratulations, yes. I think if you go on and you take a look at the videos and you see exactly what is happening and what they're bringing up in the way of debris. And the other point I want to make out, too, is having worked with the cruise ship industry for a number of years, that's one of the first things that I did in the Northeast, was chase down and make it known to the cruise ships. You can't dump maybe eight to 10 miles out before you come into the inner harbor with your cruise ships coming into Boston, down to Falcon Pier. Congratulations on your bracelet. So watch that video, folks, and it's quite educational.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this subject? If not, we have another presentation by the Coalition to Protect Patient Safety in Suffolk County, ballot question.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Jim Kernan. I represent the Coalition to Protect Patient Safety. To all members of the board, I left a copy of the presentation there to everybody in the audience. There are -- if you didn't get one, there's black and white copies over there. I'm not going to go through every slide in here because I know time is limited, so afterwards, if you have questions, I'll leave my card and happy to talk. I'm a registered nurse. I work at the Essex County Correctional Facility in Middleton, Massachusetts, the jail there as a nurse, and I also work at Boston Medical Center, the busiest emergency room in New England and the major safety net hospital for Boston. So my objective tonight is to convince you to vote no on November 6th on the first question on the ballot about staffing ratios, nurse staffing ratios. If you take a look at the presentation on this page here, you'll see what the staffing ratio does is take a sledgehammer to the idea of trying to manage how patients are taken care of in hospitals. It sets up ratios of how many patients every nurse can have, and it's -- it will be in action at all times in all units in all hospitals with no flexibility in regards to circumstances. So that means, for instance, MGH, which has a very different profile of patients, and a hospital that's out in the western state will have the same ratios. So it's basically a sort of a one-size-fits-all in a healthcare system where we have different types of people who are coming in to the hospital. The second thing I'd like to tell you about is about -- is talk to you about is access of care. Today, if you go and you're in an automobile accident, you have a heart attack or something, the ambulance will come pick you up and take you to the hospital, and they will take you. Doesn't matter, you know, we will find a way to help you. Under the ratios, if our ratios are full at BMC or MGH or any, we will divert you to another hospital, and we will divert you again and again. If you take a look at this page of my presentation here, it shows all the hospitals with emergency rooms in Massachusetts. You can see that that would have a dramatic effect upon somebody who was out in the western part of the state. If they were full, if their nursing ratios were full, they'd say, you know, "Go another 60 miles down the road," okay? You might think you're in a better situation here being basically in Boston, but that's really not the case because the -- being that the population is so much denser here, and we have so many people coming to the ERs, you would likely be, you know, if you had a major event, you could just as well be pushed to the suburban area before you were actually able to get medical help. All right? So I just, you know, it's sort of like a -- what somebody said is, it's like as if we were to say, "On all the roads in Massachusetts, we're going to have one speed limit. Doesn't matter what kind of road it is, but at all times, we're going to have just one speed limit." Now, I'd like to ask for a show of hands. How many people here know someone, have a family member who is in a nursing home? Anyone? Or has a visiting nurse coming to see them? All right? Anybody in the audience? All right. So the thing that the -- these nurse ratios will do is it makes nurses the financial enabler of hospitals. So if a hospital wants to make money, if they want to fill beds, they're going to have to have nurses. All right? So that means hospitals are now going to start hiring nurses, as many nurses as they can. They're going to get rid of their other staff because the other staff can't allow them to fill a bed. Now, where are the hospitals going to get these nurses? We currently, in Massachusetts, have a deficit of 1,000 nurses. I can get a job as a nurse in a couple of weeks without a problem. I've got great employment security, I can tell you. So what they're going to do is they're going to pull these nurses from nursing homes. They're going to pull them from the visiting nursing agencies. They're going to pull them from schools, helping children, and they're even going to pull them from jails, okay, where I work part-time. The hospitals have more money, it's true, so they're going to be able to pay more. So that means if you have a loved one or a friend in a nursing home or getting a visiting nurse, they are going to be on the losing end of the deal. They are not going to be able to get -- it's going to be harder for them to get nursing care. So to conclude, I will just say that, you know, one size doesn't fit all. We need to have a flexibility as nurses to be able to respond to the type of hospital that we are working in and the type of patient profiles that we have. We shouldn't be limiting access. If you need help, you should be able to get to the nearest appropriate emergency room to get the help that you want. And, you know, question one would be bad for the entire healthcare system. It's not just a few nurses at hospitals who would profit from this issue. It's the whole healthcare system in Massachusetts that would be damaged, so that's really pretty much everything I have to say. I'll take any questions. I know it's a complex issue, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
So how would that affect the price of healthcare?
Well, like I tell people, tongue-in-cheek a little bit, actually, it would be good for me as a nurse if question one passes, because I will do less work, I'll get paid more, and you will pay for it, okay? Because as we know, whenever there's a restriction on labor markets, it tends to force wages up, okay? Now, I probably wouldn't be making that much more money, but it could be pennies, it could be dollars or so forth, but the money would definitely be -- the charges would definitely be passed on to all of us who are paying to see our physician, our nurse, or so forth. So that's my tongue-in-cheek answer, but it's, you know, that's truth. There's also another side of this. This is a copy of the law, of the ballot question that you'll see, and I've highlighted a certain portion here. It's $25,000. Anytime a hospital violates the nurse staffing ratio, the hospital will be required to pay up to $25,000. For MGH, that might not be that big of a deal, but for a community hospital, if that happens two or three times a year, that could be the difference between being in business and being out of business, all right? Because their margins are much, much, much thinner. So that's another cost that the hospitals are going to have to bear. Of course, they're not going to bear it. They're going to pass it along ultimately to us, okay? Yes, sir.
To whom is that $25,000 paid?
It's to the Massachusetts -- it says in here, there's a Massachusetts -- the State Health Policy Commission, which is an existing body. They will be required to promulgate regulations to implement the proposed law, and they will collect that money. What they do with it after that, if it goes into the general fund or where, I don't -- I can't answer that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Vote no, November 6th. Thank you all.
We're still in public comment. Anyone wish to be heard? Can we get somebody that hasn't been heard, Dottie? You can come back in a few minutes. Yes?
I just wanted to ask the nurse, how is patient acuity affected by that?
Patient acuity?
Yes, yeah. Now, if you have something, someone an intensive kid is involved, you might have one nurse to one patient, but it's also going to be trickled down. Wouldn't it be trickled down to everybody older, custodians, everybody's going to be affected by it?
Right. I mean, for instance, I'm a new nurse. I changed careers. I've only been a nurse for four years, so you probably wouldn't want me as your nurse if you were in the ICU, all right? But my colleague, who has 30 years of nursing experience, is the one you might want. So in terms of acuity on the floor, it might be better if I have five patients and my colleague has three. My colleague would take the three acute nerd patients, and I would take the five easier ones. That wouldn't be possible under the ratios, because I would be capped out at four, or I might be capped -- I might be capped out at four or five, depending upon what part of the hospital I'm working in. So, you know, that creates all kinds of problems, and it's happened elsewhere, that that means that very few people are going to be bumped to other hospitals in order to try and find them a place where they can be, and we don't want to be transferring people who are very sick. I mean, it's just not healthy.
Okay, any further comment regarding this? You can do a sidebar. This is for open comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Kind of make a point of order.
Yes.
Because of the nature of this being a ballot question and a campaign, I would advise this council that you should afford the yes side of this to be able to speak at this.
Yes.
But also, I would also encourage you not to allow political campaigns of this nature to be utilized to the public comment here.
Thank you. Yes?
Other public comment?
Yes.
Dottie Genoffrey, Precinct 4. I've left each one of you a summary, and I'm talking to you tonight about marijuana and the possibility of a store that is being considered here in Winthrop. The reason I am, and I wore my shirt tonight to remind you folks of an outstanding event, and at that event on Sunday, if you took note and you were there, you saw all the young families with the little ones. The onus of responsibility lies with each and every one of you, because you've been elected by the town, the population, to protect, to serve, and to guide. And what is the voice of tomorrow? It's your children. It's your youth. I -- my passout sheet to you folks, in the beginning, it goes into great detail about established medical reasons around the developing brain, up to and including the age of 25. My point is, you have an opportunity as a town and as official members of the town to put a moratorium and to continue that, and if that needs to go and have you folks place this on the ballot to let the town's voice be heard in general, I would ask you to consider that also. The responsibility, as I say, lies to you. I'm old. I'm a senior. It doesn't matter one way or another. If you choose to partake and get high or to buy marijuana in any form, whether it be edible or et cetera, you can go online, you can order it, you have sources. Presently, you have over in Revere a medical marijuana dispensary going in. Now you want to put a store in Winthrop. Are we the windshield wiper for drugs? Is this the message to our children? Okay? It's not. To me and to many, many others, it doesn't belong in Winthrop, and I ask you to seriously consider, how will you run with that gauntlet and represent the youth of our community, the voice of tomorrow?
Anyone else?
I didn't realize that we could switch topics.
Yes, you can.
So I'm Buddy Pivady, and I'm in Precinct 4. So I would just like to talk to -- just a few minutes about the event that was held at Haniford Park a few weeks back. I hope that whoever decides those -- that decision again in a public park, think about the consequences. think about the consequences of what happens to the park after people have, um, these are pictures that I took with my cellphone, um, of the park after the event. And, you know, I'm not saying that people can't, yeah, I, I just think that, you know, when you have a large wedding reception in, in a park like that with, those were fires, those were clam bait fires, and I'm just like, you know, we have to protect the parks for all of us. And that's, that was a private event that, I don't know if they paid for that or whatever, but I spoke with, with the party planners and I explained that I was from the beautification committee and that I was so interested in keeping that park, you know, clean and blah, 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 you know, for all the people. And then I went up and it was all burned. And I'm like, I don't get this. I don't get why people allow that, or why people think that they can do those kinds of things in our public parks, even if they pay for it. It doesn't, you can't do that. So I, I urge you to really think again, um, I was going to say all these other things, but I feel, I know you're short on time, but I urge you to think again about allowing people to do that. You know, do that kind of part, have that kind of party. It was a large, the, the music was playing until 12:40 at night, the police detail left. I mean, it was just, that's our neighborhood. And, I mean, I live right there, and it was just wrong, uh, for that kind of event at that, at that park. One more thing, I have asked, uh, Sean Driscoll many times to please replace the trash barrels that were moved for those, for that event, and three times he has told me that he will put them back, and he has not for three weeks. So, and I don't need to say, I, I talked to him, so I'm using his name.
Betty, your points are very well taken. I was up there, I took pictures on Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, I met with Sean this morning.
Yeah.
And we'll get it resolved, we'll get more controls on whatever happens up there.
Yeah, no matter what park it is, because, you know, we really have to really take care of what we have.
Totally agree.
And, and, thank you so much. Okay.
Unfortunately, the council never knew that was going to happen.
Yeah, well, it has to be made more public, you know, and really, really consider the consequences of that. So, thanks.
They're also paying, they're also paying to have it repaired. Like, they, they're paying to have it repaired tomorrow, they're coming, it was planned to be done today.
I understand that, but you know, it's, it's the entitlement that they think that they have to, you know, I mean...
I understand that, I'm saying they're coming to repair it, so that, that picture will be fixed in the near future. It's all, is all that I'm saying.
Yes. Oh, I understand, I understand, but I just, we shouldn't have to do that, is what I'm saying too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes?
Did you get a permit for that?
Yes, there was a permit issued. We're on it. We're going to put more guidelines if it happens in the future.
When you do the permit, make a little wedding, little photo or something that, you know, goes with rules and regulations along with the permit. Because I would think it's a nice opportunity for young couples to...
Yep. Anyone else wish to be heard? Public comment? Yes?
I'll be brief, I promise.
Okay, Mr. President.
When have you, when were you ever brief? My father said to be brief, brave and brilliant, I got to be brief. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having the, uh, the discussion, uh, marijuana forum that you had, uh, a week ago tonight. It was extremely informative, uh, public forum. As was pointed out in the forum though, given that the town of Winthrop voters voted yes in the 2016 ballot question regarding recreational marijuana, it will be legal to sell recreational marijuana in Winthrop through a licensed facility unless otherwise decided by a referendum vote by the citizens and a vote of the council, both prior to December 31st, to ban the sale of recreational marijuana in Winthrop. If not, sales in Winthrop will be legal. Several communities have already voted to ban the sale in their individual communities. This referendum will have no effect on the legalization of marijuana, it will only address the ban of sale of marijuana in Winthrop. Regarding the item under new business on your agenda tonight, uh, an, an, an agenda item, excuse me, that says the town council vote special election marijuana retail establishment. Given some apparent confusion and misunderstanding of the impact of the 2016 ballot, ballot question by many, many residents, I urge the council, regardless of your individual feelings on legalization and local sale of marijuana, to schedule a referendum prior to the deadline of December 31st. The sole purpose of this referendum would be to let the voters be heard and give a clear opinion as to whether or not they want to have marijuana sold. Thank you. Consider it.
Any else? Anyone else?
Um, I thought this meeting was on the marijuana, so I've learned a lot tonight. Thank you. I'm Barbara Sevillas, and I live in Precinct One, and I got about an hour's notice that this meeting was taking place, so forgive me for being unprepared. Um, I have a question. This evening I was talking to a friend of mine who sat on the bench for 32 years, couldn't make it for health reasons, and he said, "Are they crazy? I want to go up and talk to them about what I've seen on the bench for 32 years." But I'm not here to represent him, I'm here to ask another rhetorical question, and thank you for the forum the other night because I too learned so much, I think they're great. I'm wondering, I know that there was a great deal of influence over 3% that this community would be collecting. It goes without saying that we have to think about our use in the future. I'm not saying whether or not you should smoke it or not, I'm just thinking about the youth and the impact it has on their brain. Um, but I'm wondering what you're going to do with the federal law with the fact that the money that these places collect is considered money laundering and the banks can't handle the money? So how are you going to collect your taxes? And there's no regulation on that, so how are you going to find out how much cash is around? So maybe you should take into consideration, uh, because Colorado and Washington, they are having problems because the federal government does still consider that to be money laundering and the banks can't touch the money. So, when you pay your taxes in a lot of cases, um, I haven't done this work for a while, but it goes through a bank, and so how are you going to even regulate what the town is going to receive? So those are some things that I, I, again, I agree with my neighbors, that this really has to be brought back to the community for a vote. I know it's the Wild West, and everybody thinks they're going to make a lot of money, but when you're reading your investment portfolio, you should really see what's happening to these companies that think that they're going to make a lot of money, they're losing their shorts. But, so, the youth, again, I told you, we have 11 grandchildren, 14 children, we have a great investment in the community. I personally am diametrically opposed to it, but it's not what I'm opposed to that I'm trying to press on you. I'm trying to say, it doesn't belong in the town of Winthrop, and you really should do your homework to see how you're going to collect these funds that you think are going to save the budget of this community. And I say, let's save the youth and go another way. Thanks.
Hearing none? We deliver two committee reports. Millerfield. James.
Millerfield Committee met on September 10th at the high school principal's office. The meeting was an update on the current progress of the Millerfield project, mostly focused on the field house and the field itself. Over the summer, we have had some minor repairs done to the field, there's still a few small issues, um, on the outskirts of the field. The field itself, we feel, is in very good condition after all the work that's been done over the summer. The major project left is the field house. Late summer, going into September now, they have been working on the roughens for the plumbing for the field house, which should be done the end of this week, and the foundation should be poured within the next week or two, and we have had, the vocational school students have already been down there to take a look at the site, to get acquainted with it, to have a plan of action. And the plan is for the last week in September, first week in October, that they should start framing the field house. The plan for the field house is that it will be opened September of 2019. And, um, other than that, there's, the only other project that's waiting to be done is around the shot put area, there's a four-foot fence that we plan on putting up. Um, other than that, the field is in pretty good shape, and, um, we've had one incident with a golf ball, I believe hitting a window of the lift, the handicap accessible lift. Other than that, there have been no issues, and, uh, everything is going well and is on target for September of 2019 for an official grand opening of all the facilities. Thank you.
Any questions? Town managers' report.
Sure, so, um, this, uh, next week, I am going to be, um, in Baltimore for the ICMA conference, which is the, uh, major international managers and administrators conference. I like to learn and bring some good stuff back to Winthrop, um, as well as network with other communities about kind of mutual interests, so, um, it's a good opportunity for me, and, uh, I got a scholarship from MMA to pay for most of it, so you guys aren't even going to be fronting the belt for this year. It's even better, this year. Um, I love Winthrop recap, uh, I don't really feel justified to be recapping something that was a very good event. Um, I had fun there, I brought my kids and I brought my wife, and we, uh, had a couple of drinks with people and ate some good food and saw what the Center Business District can look like when it's fully activated. Um, later on tonight, I'm going to kind of stress that point a little bit more, but, um, that type of event, um, I can't take any credit for it, I give all the credit to the people who organized it, um, specifically Kate Blackstrap and Mike and some of the others. I, I did the video as well. But, that type of event shows you how your community can come together and have a beer, eat some food, have your kids play together, and just see other people in your community. Um, people have their kids that play together in school, people, uh, who are young adults who don't have kids are connected by work and stuff like that, but these are the types of things that make newer people in the community feel welcome and part of the community, as well as people who have lived in the community for a while, to see how a space that they have always associated with one type of idea, um, really kind of turned into something else. And, um, you know, I can't say enough about it, um, I really hope that this is something that we can have on a more frequent basis, um, potentially quarterly or something like that, because, um, it, it's, it shows how good the Center Business District can be and, um, kind of how we can look forward a little bit for it. Um, also, the time-wide street sweeping is next week, um, and that is about it for my general updates.
Okay, thank you. School department update, uh, last meeting was September 10th. A couple of things to, of interest, contracts were signed with the ESPs and the nurses. The strategic plan update, the first draft was received by the council, by the school committee, but probably one of the, uh, most important things that were discussed and brought up was the, um, the kindergarten classes, uh, the size of the classes, which were up to 26 children. There was a speak, a spike in the, um, enrollment, uh, right at the beginning of September of nine additional students, and it brought it to the, to the point where there's 26 children in the classrooms with a teacher and an ESP. We are fully aware, the town manager and I have discussed it along with the superintendent and chairman of the school committee, Capabianco, uh, we are working on a, some type of a solution that we'll be ready to announce within the next week or two.
Yep.
Okay? And that was it for the school committee meeting.
Okay.
Under old business, um, council, you're going to have to withdraw the surplus old school bus. Uh, you weren't here when we voted the new one, but because you were the original maker of the motion, you have to technically withdraw that motion.
Right, and I choose to withdraw that motion now.
Okay. Does that have to be seconded or anything? Okay. Under old business, um, this is really old. Town council appropriate $4,931,500 for the purpose of financing the construction of the town center, sewer, and drainage. And, um, I will recognize the town manager.
Thank you very much. So, uh, as I was last speaking to concerning the Heart of Winthrop Festival, or I Love Winthrop, however we call it, um, the activation of the Center Business District, um, where it stands right now, unfortunately, it looks like city squares and centers around, uh, New England, um, how they looked in the 70s and 80s. Um, it has a series of buildings that, um, have not been updated to the times, um, the facades and signage haven't changed, um, it is a square that is a great public space, as evidenced by this weekend, that is not being utilized properly. Um, I feel like you guys have had the opportunity to learn about this project over time. This is not a new thing that I'm bringing to you. What I'm bringing to you today that is new, um, is kind of like a new way to think about this project and to walk through, um, how we can make the funding work and what the scope of the physical project would be. So in terms of narrative, um, you know, you guys had me come here, I started a little over a month ago, and I personally didn't think that the Center Business District was going to be one of the first things that I was working on. Um, you guys were, um, you guys didn't vote on it a month ago, um, and, um, even though some of the things that were stressed upon you at that point, were not acted upon, um, they still remain prevalent right now. Um, you know, you, you have money that's allocated to this project right now that will go away. The Mass Works money, flat out will go away, there's no larger amount of money that we can go back for, and projects in other communities that have utilized that type of money have been larger-scale mill rehab, rehabilitation projects that we do not have right now. We are utilizing, utilizing this money essentially for an infrastructure project that will support businesses in that area. This is a below-ground project, and the reason why is that days like today, when it floods down there and it floods all over our town, we need to start acting on those things. We cannot continue to put up road barriers and try to move water after it's already there and it's already been impacting people's lives. That is happening right now, it is a reality. We can have development there. Um, I'm not saying we can't have development there with the infrastructure that we have right now. So Steve was correct in saying that. That said, that infrastructure is failing. Putting another building there isn't going to make it fail anymore. It can support more people flushing toilets and running their sinks and those types of things, but it doesn't, that does not get you to solving this problem. And the problem there that we can control is the infrastructure. We have money available, and I'll talk through the funding in a minute, um, that we can get a project done to cover our infrastructure needs of that area. Now, beyond that, above ground, how the streetscape looks and how the pavement and the sidewalks and how we really vision, envision that square for the future, um, we have some money for, but we're also going to leave some of that planning up to, I, I'll say it today, I would like to form a town managers' committee to work with the community and the future assistant town manager concerning how that area will look and have a public planning process concerning how we're going to activate that space and utilize money that will be available for the above-ground project. And when I talk about money that's being available, um, there are developers that are waiting for us to start working in that area to act, to pursue permits in this town. Those developers are the way that we get the above-ground work done. We will have a plan in place that will say, this is what our street looks like, these are where we want the bumpouts, this is what we want our sidewalks to look like, these are the trees we want you to buy, these are the bushes we want you to buy, it's all programmed for them, they will love that. They will gladly spend their money on that as a mitigating factor with our community so that they can feel like they're investing in the area right around their building, they're already going to be tearing up the sidewalks and things like that. We might as well have them program it the way we want to. So, the first domino we knock down is the stuff underground. It's a two-year project, we can't get it done in one year, uh, it's not to, um, dissuade any business from occurring there, but it's, um, the scope of the project, it's a large water, sewer, drainage, infrastructure project, and a lot of stuff has to be dug up and reconnected and pipes laid. Um, it can't, it can't be done in a short period of time. Beyond that though, is, we get this done in two years, and there will be development in that area. We just had a site plan review meeting today concerning potential development, um, literally feet from where we would be working. These developments will continue to come, and when we start kind of reconceiving of what the square can look like with built-up somewhat, we can't have a square with one-story buildings, that's not how we should have our center spaces, like, that's just not what we should have anywhere. We have a limited amount of square footage... We have a limited amount of square footage in this town and we need to build up in the areas that we can. The sightlines in the square are ones that are not readily impacted. People have a sightline into the square. That's not necessarily gonna change if there's a four-story building next door. Beyond that, though, is once we start setting the table of how we want Winthrop to look in the future, we can dictate the development around the town to meet the same types of facades that we're looking for in the Center Business District. So you knock down two dominos, you take care of below ground and then above ground in the Center Business District. The next move after that is working with developers when we have a better idea of what we wanna do with the middle school site. Right now, the development that is looking there is multiple units of condominiums, things like that. We need a significantly larger project with a developer that is willing to take on the infrastructure work there because the rink doesn't work if we tear that building down. There's not electricity for it. Taking on the water infrastructure project that needs to happen there and basically trying to figure out how to either do a significant, significant retrofit to that building and building out from the physical print that is right now or a real consideration of what does it look like of breaking that site down to nothing and building up other things. So we can present to a developer our list of 15 things. We have our five things that we have to have. We know we need a rink there. We potentially need public parks and rec space, some other types of things that we want out of there. Then we have some of our, you know, pick five of the seven that we want. And then we have three like wish listy type of things. We can present this to developers as this is a project that you look, we're looking for. You show us what it looks like. And we can dictate the terms of what they're working inside of. It is a huge property and there has, from my perspective, not been the amount of work done in terms of securing funding and securing developers that are ready to take on a project like that. This is not a multi-developer project. This is a, essentially the largest parcel that we have at our disposal within town to operate on. So that, in my mind, cannot happen until we show that we're willing to put some skin in the game, underground, and borrow and utilize our water sewer rate and things like that to get to a place where we can actually pay for the infrastructure project that we need, show developers that we're willing to invest in the community so that they invest in the same community and benefit from it. And then the middle school project will come along with a developer that we want. If we don't set the table from them, for them, as from my perspective, this community has not done in the past, if we don't set up the parameters of what we wanna do going into the future, then we're just gonna get run over. You're gonna have developers coming in and picking a parcel at a time, developing how they want to and it mucking up our planning board, our zoning board, site review, all those types of things. So really, going into the financials now, if, Dick, do you wanna come up here for this part? So right now, Steve can walk you through, Stephen Art can kind of hit on, yeah. Stephen Art can hit on some of the things that we're looking for in terms of the overall project cost. We ran through multiple scenarios of funding this and as of right now, the project cost would be 12,167,000 dollars, uh, 167,500 dollars. That covers, like I said, all of the underground work that needs to be done. And there's also a map that we can distribute that shows exactly where the connections would be concerning the work that would be done underground. To do that, we would be utilizing the Mass Works grant money, which is the 2.38 that we have available. We'd be using that for paving and sewer and water. In terms of the sewer rate, we would be borrowing for that and that would probably be going into sewer and drainage part of it. And then for water, we'd be borrowing as well. Most of the borrowing for water has already been previous authorizations to bother borrow. So if you, do you wanna walk through just a little bit more of it?
Sure. As, as Austin said, the project is 12,167,500. So you have various grants, the sewer grant, MWRA, Mass Work Grant, and some Complete Streets Grant that make up the three, make up 3,080,500 of it. And the rest of it is gonna be through borrowing. So the general fund isn't, doesn't have any borrowing in it. Right now, the, as you said, the sewers, the drainage is, is in the sewer and the water. So there'd be 6,808 borrowed from the, in the sewer fund and 2,244 in the water fund. The 2,244 has already been borrowed and a couple hundred thousand have been spent already. So the, this Mass Work Grant is, is being spread across the funds as, as the funding was needed and a million seven of it was used in, for the paving, which is the general fund, which would have been the general fund borrowing portion, but we used the Mass Works Grant for this. So ultimately, what happens is the, the two thou, the, the, when it gets at its largest, which will be the first year that all the debt kicks in, because you might borrow in pieces, where you borrow pot in one year and then it's due in 2020 and another pot isn't due, you don't, you borrow the second part of it and it's not due till 2021. The biggest hit would be about 610,000, a little bit less. And so when that 610,000 hits, this is the water sewer fund, that's about a dollar 27 on the rate. And you already put in to the rate, because we had already borrowed some, about 47 cents was put into the rate last year. So right now, that's 80. But when we did, when the rate increase happened last year, one of the things it was based on is a certain amount of usage. And as happens often, when, when rates go up significantly, usage goes down. So it's a, it's a, it's a tough thing with, with the water and sewer rate business, but when usage goes down, rates go up to accommodate the less usage because there's fixed costs. So I, I would say that to do this project, we're talking in the 80 to a dollar range because part of that is, is what might have to happen, because we haven't got a chance to analyze. We've only had one billing go out and we haven't even collected the whole billing cycle yet. So I was looking at it today and, and I just didn't have enough time to get far enough into it because we're working on this. But it's possible because of the, the usage being down, that rates have to go up a certain amount. I don't know. But I would say to be on the safe side, you should consider this project with the end of rate increase because of decline in usage to cost about a dollar, new, new dollar.
Just a quick clarification question, because I'm a little confused now and I think some other, are you saying, because you said a dollar 27 for the project?
Right.
And then are you saying an additional 80 to a dollar?
No, no, a dollar 27 for the project. Last, the three-dollar rate increase included like 47 cents of what, of this, because we had already, it had already borrowed some money. And so I would, I would say, if you subtract that, it's, it's 80 cents, 80 cent increase. But I'm saying.
And are you saying that you still haven't calculated if there would be, or are you assuming there would still be?
I'm assuming there's gonna be a.
There's going to be another rate increase, just in general?
Just to make up for the lack of usage.
And you have no idea what that increase could be?
I'm just saying another 20 cents right now, you know? So I'm saying that for the project and to catch up for the usage, it's gonna be, you know, in the vicinity of a dollar.
Okay. So a little background on this. The reason why I am not looking to borrow on the general fund is your operating budget is incredibly tight, as you all are aware. If we were to borrow on this to the scale of what we're looking at for this, we wouldn't have a budget conversation. It would be a flat budget and nobody gets raises and we can't fulfill the contracts that were already entered into previously. So we need the financial flexibility of putting this on water sewer instead of putting it onto the general fund in terms of borrowing, because if we put it on the general fund in terms of borrowing, we won't have a budget conversation this year. The money's already spent.
Just, just, the, the levy increase in 2019, I think, was like 898,000 dollars in that vicinity. So if, if you were saying we wanna push a good amount to the general fund, that's what we're talking, you know? It'd be eating into what, what was available for other departments to that, whatever extent that would be.
Sure. Is, is a, another potential option to get the public involved to say, here's another option. You could do a 4.9 million dollar debt exclusion to pay for it. Is that an option?
I would not want to entertain a debt exclusion on this project due to the fact that we are most likely going to have to be entertaining a debt exclusion for a public safety building in the near-term future, which is a significantly larger project. And I think the community going through those types of elections concerning debt exclusions would be better served for a larger building project rather than a smaller infrastructure project that we have the ability to borrow for effectively.
My only question is it gives the, the people the right, the option to say, they, they don't have any choice. If, if we vote, if, if, well, not me, but if six people vote yes, they don't have a choice. Their rates are going up. If, if this goes to a debt exclusion, they have the right to pick and choose where they wanna spend their money.
Do they have a choice in electing you?
Yes, they absolutely did.
So that's, that's their choice in this, right? You're, you're representing them on this matter or the people who are in the town?
I think we always go to the people. I think the fact that we're doing this without public notice and people think that we might be, I can't imagine that we would be voting on this tonight.
It's on the agenda.
Well, last, two weeks ago, it was under the impression of most people in this town that this project was done for now. And now it's back on the agenda without any.
We had, we had a discussion.
Neighbors haven't been notified, business owners in the center haven't been notified about this. It was on the agenda. I don't know how many people look at the agenda. I'm just saying, I would just wanted to ask a question, if it's feasible, if the option would be to do a debt exclusion and then the people of the town really do get to decide where their money goes.
They wouldn't be able to vote on that until the May election unless you wanna make another special election.
Potentially do a special election on top of a, now want a special election.
So again, you need to come up with funding for all of these special elections that you have.
Well, it could be one special election which costs 18,000 dollars.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just trying to be upfront and, and clear with the public.
Again, that doesn't put the funding in place for this. We still would have to go to the state and probably say to Jay Ash that we don't have a plan because we chose again not to make a decision concerning the nature of this project and again, return and say, we need you to give us this money in another year because we couldn't choose what to do with it. You know, you are too, if, if you go to another election, you're not gonna be able to bid out the working time.
Okay, I'm just saying the fact of the matter is that that money given to us was supposed to be for a shovel-ready project. Obviously, it's not. The price of this project just went up another 2 million from what we were told months ago. I thought it was a 10 million dollar project, including the streetscape. Now it's a 12 million dollar project, not including the streetscape, which is the first I've heard of that figure. And I don't find the only one on the council.
And I can speak to, and I can have Steve and Art speak to any questions that you have about the scope of the project concerning how the money would be spent. In terms, sure.
Council President, I don't know if your intention was to have another vote for tonight, but given that there's a lot of questions back and forth, I'm just gonna jump to what we've done before as center people and say, I'm gonna recuse myself now rather than getting these back and forth because we should just keep it consistent to what we've done before.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go sit out there.
Thank you. You know, usually I let the other councils go first and I usually the last one to speak. But I've spent a lot of time with our new town manager since he took over less than two months ago. And this has been high on the list. We discussed it about a month ago and we were kind of convinced that we'd just let it go until another time, which is kind of what happens in this community. We kind of keep kicking it down the road. We had a meeting with the speaker and our senator, a long discussion about the grants that we get in this community and the special funds that come to Winthrop because of the speaker. We talked to Jay Ash in his department, his people. If we don't do this project now, if we put it off, whether it's three months, six months, a year, two years, there's no guarantee we're gonna get anything. We'll lose the 2.3 million. There's no guarantee we're gonna get anything. I think we need to make a stand. As the town manager expressed a few minutes ago, we have developers that are ready to do work in this community. We met with one today. They're ready to give us money for the icing on the cake, so to speak, the, the streetscapes and so forth. These are the types of things that you get involved with, but we have to make the first move. We have to make the commitment. We have to show that we're serious about making improvements in the center. Once we do this, then these developers will come in. We will work with them so instead of a streets, a, a, a streetscape costing three or four million dollars, that's picked up by the developers. So I would urge the council to seriously consider moving forward on this project tonight.
Anyone else want to be heard on the motion to move forward on this?
Yes, well, I'd like to say that, you know, I think this project is absolutely essential for the future of Winthrop. I'm a little concerned that we haven't sort of thought it all the way through. I haven't heard anything about a phasing plan or, or sort of what the long-term vision of the streetscape is. And I wonder, Austin, if you can kind of walk us through how that would work.
So, just kind of two things on that. If, Art, if you wanna, Art, actually Steve, if you wanna come, talk just about the nature of the phase. But before that, in terms, you can, you can sit down, sorry. In terms of the streetscape, I know that money has been spent on landscape architect and I am not saying that that work wasn't important or something that can't help inform the project. What I would like to do, since I am still new to this, is I would like to have a small managers committee along with whoever is in the assistant town manager's role, going out into the community, talking with those businesses about what is important to them in terms of the streetscape. We can utilize that work of the landscape architect as somewhat of a roadmap of a starting point, but then we can kind of refine that to a style that's unique to Winthrop, that we want to push, we want to have developers follow up on. If you want blue pavers on your sidewalks and purple colored streets, like you, as a community, can decide these things. But I want to give the whole community, not just a, a select interested few, be able to have the choice to kind of offer their input to this, advocate for things that they like. I, I really hope that there are ideas out there that haven't been explored because certain people in our community haven't been activated. And I wanna give them the cho, the chance to kind of be part of this process. We have a small amount of money within this to do some of the streetscape work, but really it's more effort is gonna be put in towards a public planning process of really two years from now, how do we want this plate, how do we want that square to look? And how do we wanna dictate how developers look? And I'm, we potentially have to work through some of the zoning as well. So this would be a very good opportunity for like a public process and for the public to come together on really a unified project that they get to have the input on how it's gonna look in the parts that impacts them in their day-to-day. The underground stuff, like this is why our bridges are failing and our infrastructure all over the country and stuff like that, because it's not sexy. Like everyone would rather pay for a teacher in a school or a school building or anything like that other than fixing the roads and what's under the roads. So the, again, this is, like I said, it's an opportunity for us to put some skin in the game in terms of like, we have, that underground work is gonna be on us. That's it. Like we're, there isn't gonna be a way that we can get around taking care of it. No developer is gonna come in and fix all of the infrastructure work that we need in Center Business District. So I am really under the impression that we spend the amount of money that we need to spend. I mean, I kind of went back and forth on some of the different options. I think this option puts us into the best opportunity to lay almost like a blank can, not a blank canvas, but a canvas that can be worked upon by these developers and the construction companies that come in and they can provide us with kind of that icing that makes the square look the way that we want it to.
Austin, I think he's looking for a phasing plan.
Sure, and Steve can speak to the phasing.
That's very important.
Yes, that, that's true, Council President. And maybe if we just kind of, since we're on the, the streetscape.
Sure.
So that money isn't included in this, this 12.1 million?
No.
But we are confident that developers can help us along or we're gonna be coming back with more money later?
That is literally the first mitigation topic that I'm going to discuss with all of them is you want to come into our community and you wanna invest in this community and you want to benefit financially from this community. Your ability to get some skin in this game is to help us make this square what we want it to be. And depending on the number of them and how. number of them and how many we get on board and stuff like that, we're giving them sections of road, this part from this part. This is how we want it to look. This is the bumpouts. These are all these types of things. We will have that specked out for them, and we will say, if you want to give us the money to pay our contractors to do it, we will gladly do it. If they want to do it with their contractors, which would probably save them money in the long term, they can do it with their contractors. All we're looking for is consistency and following of our messaging, and we can ensure that will happen going forward.
Do you feel confident that we can sort of assemble the airplane mid-flight like that? That's...
I don't think of it as, I don't think of it as mid-flight. I think of it as, you know, there's potentially three developments that could go in there in the very, probably during this construction phase, could be worked on. I see probably two other places that I think could be activated in the near future as well. That could really, it's not going to take 20 developers to get some money in the game for this type of thing. It's a three, $4 million project that one of the ones we talked to today would, I think, front a fair amount of money for this type of thing. These are developers that are going to be making millions of dollars on these projects. Them putting a million dollars into it when they're already buying a plethora of materials and already considering ripping up the sidewalk to set up how their parking garage or parking area would interact with the street and stuff like that. They're already programming money to do some of this work. We're just going to say, instead of paying us some money to go into our schools, pay some money to fix up this project, like, help us with this project, and let's just get it done. And I think it's, it may not be something that gets done within the two years, but I think it's a reasonable within three years type of thing to get done.
Do you anticipate coming back to the council, asking for more money for the streetscaping? And if so, about how much do you think that will be?
Uh, no.
You do not anticipate doing that?
I do not. And I can't anticipate what that amount would be because just the nature of construction cost going up and stuff like that. I think right now, if you were to take the plan that was presented previously, it's between three and $4 million. This isn't something that's really water sewer rate related. It would be something that we'd have to borrow off of or go for a debt exclusion type of thing. So I don't want to do that with you guys. This is, I really think our skin in the game is the underground work for this project.
And moving on to the second part of my question about the phasing plan.
Yep.
Can you walk us through the plan to enable businesses to survive down there during this construction?
Sure. Steve, do you want to hit on that a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah.
You want to say this, Steve?
No, no, it's fine. What's being proposed here is the full infrastructure project. The phasing plan that you're looking for, an exact phasing plan, can't really occur until the council votes on the project and the project, we actually say, okay, this is the scope and limit of the project. The phasing plan will be put together in short order. It will be, it will be part of the bid package because the contractor is going to have to adhere to the phasing plan. So what we're, what we're in front of you today is looking for the go-ahead. A lot of this funding has already been authorized. We're looking for a commitment from council to allow us to, you know, complete the funding and do the full infrastructure project all the way up to Pleasant Street. The full limits do, there is hardscape that's happening in this phase of construction. The way we're doing, what we're trying to do is minimize the impact on business. We understand that this is a big dig for Winthrop, and it's going to, it's going to have a huge impact on the businesses down there. So we want to do the most intense part of the project once and set us up in a way that we can, we can finish the hardscape with as little, you know, further impact as possible. So it's full infrastructure, it's all sidewalks and streets completely paved. The sidewalks would be completed in all the areas where there's, there's not an opportunity to change the configuration of it due to the property lines. And, I mean, the buildings are where the buildings are. At the council's request, we hired a landscape architect, and that landscape architect proposed a design down there. The council chose not to adopt that design. But with the areas that were in, the opportunity, you know, for bumpouts at the entrance to CBS, the reconfigure, the potential reconfiguration of French Square, a few bumpouts on the Hagman Road area, those areas, those areas of sidewalk wouldn't be, we wouldn't waste the money doing those just to rip them out again. So we would be completing every area that we know is going to be where it is. And as the town manager spoke to, we would be looking for the developers to come in, and there already are a handful of them that want to develop down there to continue the project and complete the project in those areas. And those areas, again, would be just some curb R and R, some milling overlay of areas of asphalt that we would bring up to grade and bind up in this phase of the project. It would be, it would be what I would consider quick construction, little impact construction to really shape, you know, and get the finishing touches, the finish work in the project. But what we're proposing would be a full, all-inclusive infrastructure project of all the three utilities and restoration of the street and sidewalks. Again, the phasing plan can't really happen until we know the scope of the, the entirety of the project.
I'm a little confused because, Austin, I thought I heard you say that you had the entire scope within sort of the notes for the council. Is that not quite there?
From current, I have a, I have visualizations of the project. I mean, again, with the phasing, it's not like this street happened in first and this street happened second. Those types of things would happen with, like Steve was saying, with the bid documents. So in terms of the phase, we're thinking of it as an infrastructure phase of the project. Like, it's a two-year project. There's no real, like, the second phase to it is fixing up the above-ground type of stuff. This is all generally one phase of a project, fixing the underground stuff. I mean, I, we can, we can, I guess, talk about the terminology in terms of phasing type of thing, and I know this has been one of the things that's been brought up in the community previously. But this is, you can, even though it's over two years, it's a single phase of a project. It's the infrastructure portion of the revitalization of the Center Business District.
Any other councils?
If I may.
If you may, ask me both.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could I take some of his?
You can.
I want to, I want to...
You can, but there's people that haven't...
It's okay. Stick with council's account.
Go ahead. You can answer.
May I, Councilor?
Please.
Here's, here's, here's the problem. What's been brought up is phasing in the center for the businesses, the people that open the doors and service their customers. They want to know, they want to be assured that there is a phasing plan. So let's say Woodside Ave is going to be worked on.
Yeah.
This next couple of weeks.
Sure.
What is the plan?
Sure.
Where's the parking?
Exactly.
Who's going to put the, right?
Yes, yes.
So, in terms of the order of the work, that has not been determined yet. The scope of the project is, here is exactly where we're going to have basins, and here's where the lines are going to be running. All of those things have been specked out. How much it costs to do the work that needs to be done. In terms of the phasing of the project, that is something that we need to still work on with our bid package and then also the construction company that comes in. Because we, at this point, with development, that's probably going to happen in that area, we shouldn't lock ourselves into this street is happening at this point in time when we want to offer flexibility to developers to actually be able to work on some of these buildings simultaneously while we're doing the work in the streets. So we don't, like, having a schedule of this place is going to be done first or second, that's not in place yet.
Is our engineering person, could you explain more as to how that would work with the construction companies?
Yeah. So the phasing plan will be done. What we don't want to do is make multiple plans for multiple different types of scopes of projects. Because what we're doing in that, when we do that, is we're spending more of the town's money that we don't need to on plans that might not be used. So if there's a defined scope, like, there is right now, where it's just infrastructure, and we know what the sidewalk improvements are going to be, we know, now we can work on that phasing plan. That can be done in short order, and we can review that with the town and get approval for it, get it ready for the bid package. Then contractors will bid upon that work, and that will be, that will outline, we're doing work here, we're doing work here, we need to keep access to the businesses during this time period. All of that gets incorporated in there. But to do that now without council saying, this is our project, we'd spend more money developing plans than our risks. So that's why that's been held off until we have defined scope.
Any other council questions?
Yes, thank you for bringing it up again. For all of the reasons we stated, I think this infrastructure project is incredibly important for Winthrop's future. I guess my concern with this approach is that we have the engineering work that's underground, and then we still need to get the surface work on top that matches what's underground. And we've had so many changes to the scope of what the engineering work is and how this is all put together. How are we going to connect the engineering work that's going to be done first with the surface work that we want?
You guys want to?
Yeah, I can answer that. Sorry. So there are going to be some areas where there may have to be some rework of the final surface improvements that end up being decided, but it's minor. There, it's going to be at the intersection of Woodside Avenue and Pauline Street and a little bit of an area near French Square. Everything else, there's not a lot of changes that can happen, at least we've seen, or that are, that have been evaluated from the previous landscape architect that would be impacted. Everything else, we've kind of managed and kept in place. And the rework that you would have to go through would be maybe a catchphrase in addition here or there that we'd have to tie in with the man that would be very small.
So what I need in order to even consider moving forward with this approach is a detailed written plan that connects what's underground with the surface work that we want, so that we are confident that the engineering work that's underground matches what we want to have on the top. And that means making sure that we have sidewalks that are the right width and handicap accessible, sidewalks that go all the way down Hagman Road that connect the improved public space at French Square and that whole piece. And I think that we need to get, you know, I can look at engineering drawings all day long, and it doesn't mean anything, but I need a written description of how that's going to fit together. And I think we need the same sort of written plan regarding the financing before we can responsibly move forward with this approach. We've just, we've had too many changes over the course of the last two years on this project, but...
Do we have that written plan? We have written plan.
I guess my question is this, Counselor. So we proposed, the landscape architect that you asked us to bring in proposed a design, and it showed your sidewalk down Hagman, but that wasn't adopted. What would, what would you want to change?
So the council did adopt a different, a modified surface work plan. It was based on what the landscape architect had proposed and then modified slightly, and the council did adopt that. And what I want to know is, is that the surface work, the basic design that we're going to stick with in terms of where the bumpouts are, how French Square is reconfigured and that? You know, maybe there are some choices to make later on.
Absolutely. It could be.
Maybe there are some...
I don't recall the council voting on that, on that design.
I remember it because I had proposed an amendment to the, to the plan and lost. So I do remember. I remember that.
If the council has an adopted plan, incorporate it right now, and the project's done.
And I understand there are still choices to make about, you know, the materials that would get used, the type of trees, exactly where the trees would get placed. But I need some assurance about how the surface work, the basic design of the hardscape, how that is going to be matched up with what's under the street. And if we are anticipating that certain portions of the surface work or engineering work need to be redone at a later date, we also need to identify those and itemize all of that out, too.
But the engineering work has been configured to that design, but that design, again, was never adopted. If you voted that design, that was never...
It was the previous council.
It's the previous council. It wasn't this council.
Well, the engineering work is designed for that, for that. And that's why, right now, those couple of areas that we were not going to develop, because the council didn't portray to us that that was an adopted design. If that's an adopted design, the engineering work's complete, essentially.
I'm, we can go back and check the minutes for that because I'm pretty sure that there was a vote on that, on that matter. And, you know, I think just getting, you know, an executive summary of exactly what the engineering, how the engineering is going to fit with the surface work would give me a lot of assurance about the plan moving forward. And I think that's sort of the same analysis can be applied to the financing plan because that also has had several iterations. And this was really helpful to presentation today, but if we could also sort of get a written summary of what that is, I think it would be really helpful.
So in terms of written summary, is there information that you're looking for that would make you more confident to vote on this? Because that's, so, all of the information concerning the engineering WC has had for, I mean, they had the maps printed out. We can spec any of those things out. I don't think an executive memo from me would be able to argue, articulate what a map could show. So I would encourage you all to look at the maps concerning the work.
But, see, here's the thing. We've had several different maps. Which map are we going to go with?
I mean, so...
This is what I want to, want to be like crystal clear for all of it.
Again, so, again, though, the map doesn't determine, like, having a map, if that's going to make you have a decision concerning the borrowing of money or not, I would kind of like to offer that, again, is being strongly stressed upon us to act on the money that we have been allocated previously, because if we do not work with some sort of haste on this, and that's why I brought this up on the next meeting that I could, that that money will go away. And we need to give an indication as soon as possible because I know not everyone has all of the information available to them that they would like. Also, I would like to caution, there is no perfect project here. There is a good project, and perfect is the enemy of good. There's not going to be a perfect project. There's not going to be a project that incorporates all of the requests that have been made from the community on this process. So we need to, and I encourage you, to make a decision on this, one way or the other, with some sort of haste. Other words, I have to caution this council on looking a gift horse in the mouth. Your capital projects have been made over time from going to the state with your handout, time after time.
I understand all of this, but there's no new information in front of me tonight versus what we had a month ago. And I think that your, your plan and your proposal of moving forward this way makes a lot of sense. I just want to make sure that we have the right, that we're all on the same page with regard to what the, what the surface work and the hardscape is going to look like, and some assurance that the engineering work under the ground is going to match that.
It, it's the same engineering firm. That's, that's the thing.
I understand it's the same engineering firm, but the same engineering firm, we've had several different iterations of how the engineering was going to work.
So they're going to be operating off the most recent plans that we have, and they have a plan for that as well, that they've designed, and then we will be communicating that to any developers that do it. So we are the clearinghouse for this.
I understand. So if all of the work is done, it shouldn't be that onerous to put together something in writing that makes clear exactly what the plan is. That's my position.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I think that your concerns are valid, Counselor. I also think that there's always changes and flexibility that occur. There's always unforeseen conditions in every project, and there's compromise that results from it. If your desire to vote in the affirmative on this type of project is hinging on a specific written map and information, you should be aware that that could change. I think that the overall goal is consistent, and I personally think that we should move forward on this based on the engineering firm and information that we've gotten to this point. I don't think that we will ever know for sure if it's going to match up exactly when it's all said and done. But I think that my concern is exactly what the town manager says, that if we, if we wait too long on this, we're back to square one, and we're at a good spot right now to move ahead.
Okay. Do you have anyone else that wants to put this to a vote? Because we had put this off until we had a town manager. Now we have a town manager. He's telling us what he wants us to do. There's no reason to put it off. But if you have more questions, Nick, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. So I have some more questions regarding the financing of this project. You... You had mentioned the likelihood of a $1 increase in the water sewer rates, and I'm wondering, what does that translate into percentage-wise for an increase that residents should expect?
Well, the, the, the $3 increase was about a 17% increase, and so, it's probably like a 10, a 5% increase.
So what is the water sewer rate right now?
$19.90, so it's a 5% increase.
Okay. Moving forward, I ask that those numbers be given in percentages terms, just so they're a little more easy to understand for everyone.
Okay. Am I, can I just toss in something? One of the things is, I, I think that whenever...
Let everybody know who you are.
I'm Dick Hanksden, I'm the consultant, I'm the outside consultant for the, the internal auditor for the, for the council. That's something that I think is real important, that anytime you're authorizing a water sewer project, I don't think it should just be, here's what the borrowing's going to be. I think every single time that it gets presented to you that we'd like you to authorize a certain amount, it should be told you also, this would mean a rate increase of X in, in the percentage, if you want. So that if you're leaving something out there, if you've got something on the back burner that you're thinking of doing, like you have another $2 million project that's going to cost you 30 cents, well, you should, that, that should be still sitting in there, so next, so if we say it's, it's going to be $20, $20.90 now, and the next time we have a $2, a $2 million project, we're going to say it's 30 cents, then you should be aware that that's what it's going to be. And if there's a third project, they, and you haven't passed another one, it should be piled on top of that, so you always know, and you're not just authorizing that without knowing what it's going to mean to the rate. So I would think that anytime somebody comes in here with anything to do with the water sewer, should be, what's the, what's the rate implications?
Also...
You have another question?
I have another question, good news, Councilor Markory. I'm wondering, you know, given the scope of the project as it's currently proposed, should we anticipate any other taxes or fees to increase to pay for it beyond the increase in the water rates?
As it, this is the way, I mean, there's plenty of different ways of skinning a cat, this is the way we, we did it today, to try to, you know, use the grant money, you know, as it was intended, the sewer's picking up the drainage and the sewer, and sewer and water are picking up the drainage and the sewer and water portion. So the general fund's just picking up the paving, and that's all being paid for through the Mass Works grant, so. You know, I, I think that there's, there'll be, if the authorization is, well, right now, what'd you say, it was $4,931 on the table? I think as you pass this, I think that's making your commitment to it. I think that when, right now, a certain amount was put into the SRF as, for an application, and they might come back to you, they generally want the authorization to be in their specific language. And so sometimes you have to, that, you, you'll come back and they'll say, you authorized X, but we need to change the wording. So you can either just change the wording in the motion, or you can rescind the old one and do it in their word, because SRF generally gives you counsel, their bond counsel gives you a specific language that they want to see for their loans.
I believe we do have a motion, it's been before the council for quite some time.
So you have to amend the amount of money.
Pardon?
You have to amend the amount of money.
Okay, well, at the present time, the motion before the council is to appropriate $4,931,500 for the purpose of financing the construction of the town center and store and drainage. Okay, that is the motion before us. Is there any amendments? Carrying none?
Do we have the figure?
We, we can operate within that figure for right now.
Okay.
All right, so, so the motion again is to appropriate $4,931,500 for the purpose of financing the construction of the town center with its sewage and drainage. I'm going to take a roll call vote.
Point of order, if I could?
Um, I know we had discussed in the previous session, do we need 2/3 of the entire council
or 2/3 of the councils who have not recused themselves?
2/3 of the council that are present and voting.
Got it, thank you for that.
Just taking the motion.
I want to make a resolution motion, but I did give my the finance committee, and it was seconded, it's been on these, on the agenda since the last council.
Council president, do we need a second?
No. Come on, committee, back.
Are you ready? Councilor Inman?
No.
Councilor Callop?
Yes.
Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilor LaConte?
No.
As President Markory?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Yes.
The motion carries forward to...
You can rejoin us. New business. Town council will adopt MGL, Chapter 48, Section 59B, to the establishment of reserve force for the fire department. Chief, do you want to speak on this, that we're going to, we're going to refer this to rules and ordinance, but you might want to just give us a...
All that we're requesting is, what's happening right now with the economy being strong, the fire academy is running anywhere from nine months to 12 months out to get cadets into it. We no longer have fire alarm, we're in a regional dispatch, we can't hire folks and keep them on fire alarm, paying them, working them, and then sending them off to the academy when an opening comes up. So what's happening is, we have some great Winthrop homegrown kids on the civil service list right now, so we're able to grab them, because a lot of times you have four months on the civil service list, but you only, you have nine months before you have an opening. And these kids lose their, or these men lose their opportunity to work in their hometown, they've been on the list many a times. So we're, we're looking to create a reserve list, unlike the police department. Police department hires one, they send them to the reserve academy, they put them to work, they fill short shifts, only so many of them can be on duty to fill a shift, but what we're looking to do is, we're looking to create up to six men on this reserve, or six candidates, male or female, that, that come up, that we can put on the reserve list. Now we have names, I can't call up the fire academy and say, next July, I'd like to put two recruits in that class. You have to have names, you have to offer them employment. So by creating a reserve list, we won't be working them, they don't accrue retirement time while they sit on this list, but in this time that they sit on this list, they can go out and get their EMT, we have names who will do their background searches and their physicals prior to being put on the list. So all we're asking, it's really a no cost item, we're just asking to be able to create this reserve list, we can protect some homegrown kids that are on the list, and it just facilitates us knowing who we're going to be giving names to the academy, seven or eight months out.
Chief, if we just adopt the state program, do we have to have our own audience about the reserve list?
No, all we have to do is a vote. A vote by you enables this.
Enables it?
It goes on to say that the cities and towns can run it any way they would like, but it takes a vote of the council to establish it. We're not looking to stack it with 20 or 30 guys, we're looking to put a two or a three year group of gentlemen that would be hired in a short period of time. So all we're doing is asking for you folks to consider that, to make our hiring practices a little bit smoother.
Thank you, Chief, I'll entertain a motion, we'll refer to the ordinances. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Town council declare a vehicle surplus, I'll entertain a motion to refer that to finance. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Transfer $20,000 in town council reserve to replenish the general fund FY14 for derelict properties, I'll entertain a motion to refer to finance.
Second, I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Transfer $17,500 town council reserve to replenish general fund remainder FY19 to pest control, motion...
Wait, just a question.
Yes.
I understand that this, I think this pest control was for rodents and not mosquitoes, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I understand that we were having a problem today with rodents?
We have.
Is there a situation where this could be considered an emergency motion and not have to go to finance?
I would think so.
If the town manager is saying this is an emergency situation?
It is, they were just, they were literally just meeting.
I'll say that, I'll entertain a motion to vote on it.
To vote on it as an emergency motion?
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Under new business, direct the Winthrop planning board zoning spe, yeah, direct the Winthrop planning board zoning specifies for marijuana bylaws. I'll read the motion, which we're going to have to refer to, let's see. By town council president, this was also, Nick was involved in the drawing this as well, that the town, the council direct the Winthrop planning board to prepare a specific zoning on the marijuana bylaw, specifically to determine the appropriate location, activities, type of business, signage, buffer zone, the hours by the first town council meeting in November of 2018 for the town council to review or take any other action thereto.
Motion to approve?
One note on that.
Yes.
Councilor LaConte, you had asked specifically for additional language in this concerning the signage and things like that. That is well documented in the law and the regulations that the CCC is operating under, that our planning board would use as like the informing documents to setting zoning. So a fair amount of that has been set up with, on state standards on it, but they'll have the opportunity to kind of take the information that you're looking for and help inform their policy as well.
So if I may just sort of set the stage of, I was suggesting some additional language to this motion to guide the planning board, to have more restrictive ordinances that they would eventually come out with, sort of saying that signage needed to be subtle, no one wants a big neon green cannabis leaf in town, also that no products be visible from the windows, is that also included? It's already part of a state regulation, so there's no need to do that as well in town?
Can't have bonds and products in the window, basically, yeah.
This motion is just to send it to the planning board, the planning board will write one, they will then send it back to us, it will go to rules and ordinance, the rules and ordinance will come up with an ordinance, whether it's the same one as the planning board, or we can tweak it, and then it comes to the council for a vote. All this is to do is to get it started and sent to the planning board.
I just wanted to know, Councilor LaConte?
Thank you very much.
Message received, that will be worked on in the state regulations.
The final part that I had suggested is, might it make sense to put a deadline for the planning board? We kind of need this to happen soon, given the deadline.
They have to, the first town council meeting in November.
Thank you.
Also, the other reason we're doing this, obviously, is to protect the town. If we don't have documentation, if we don't have zoning in place by the first of January, anybody can convince a Winthrop, some smart aleck, and decide to open up shop down the center someplace in an empty store. If we don't have any zoning on the books, then he can sue the town. So that's the other reason we're doing this. So a motion has been made, was it second?
I made the motion, I...
Oh, second.
And we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Councilor Terry? Are we there already? We're there.
So I think we had a, about a week ago, as ex-president, former president Gail stated, we had a forum where we had, I want to say I counted, I could be wrong, but 67 people in the audience, and by my count, 76% of the people that addressed had a negative feeling of how the, you know, there were many people that said that they were confused with the election. We just had, if we remember, two years ago, an election where the council voted unanimously on three items to be included in the Miller Field project. After the vote was taken, it was passed by a large margin, and people misunderstood one of the subjects being the tennis courts. The council took their information in, and the council as a whole voted to take the tennis courts off. So there was a misunderstanding, they didn't understand the question. And this seems to have happened again. So I think it would be detrimental of us to once again go against the will of the people and to not ask for a special election. I think along with asking for a special election, we would be able to get an extension of the moratorium, and I think with an election in place, I think that that would be passed. That is my feeling. So I asked the council to vote tonight to have a special election where the town clearly would understand the meaning of what they were voting for, and I don't, I, I think it's very clear to me, and the constituents have talked to me, and the amount of people that were at that meeting, and the percentage of people that were at that meeting, that people understand that it's legal in Massachusetts, but people also feel, I feel extremely strongly, that they don't want a single establishment in Winthrop. Winthrop's a very small community, 1.6 square miles, we would obviously have to have some sort of buffer schools around, buffer zones around the schools, however, you also can't have spot zoning where, you know, you can't just say, well, no place within a mile of a school, and then you wouldn't be able to have one anyway, but the locations are going to be somewhat scarce, and, and I don't think it's what the residents want, and I think they have the right to, to be heard, so I am asking for a special election.
A motion has been made for a special election on the marijuana retail establishment, do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
A second. Discussion on the motion, yes, sir?
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering, what exactly is the context of this motion here? What, are we having a special election to determine exactly?
I am asking for a special election to eliminate a retail establishment, limitation of, limiting all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite consumption at, at business locations, another type of licenses issued, marijuana related businesses, that was an ordinance that was passed in the city of, town of Cohasset. And that's what I'm asking for, yeah.
Is that in essence saying that you want to ban any marijuana establishments?
Yes, any retail establishments.
How we bear word of theirs, but we can't do it.
Councilor Markory?
Just, there was a question, you know, and it passed in Winthrop 53%, so right now, the majority of the people in Winthrop, to her knowledge, do want.
No, that's wrong.
I'm not, that's what I'd say, don't say that, because that's what happened, the vote was 53 to 47 in favor. So maybe another election is called for if so many people misunderstood, but if so many people misunderstood, there is a way for them to get a referendum by getting 1,200 signatures and coming to the council with a question that they want put on the ballot. And if they have those signatures, then we have to put it on the ballot, all right? At the present time, there's a motion, but there's no ballot question in front of us, it hasn't been put to us as a ballot question, I don't see how we could vote on it tonight. I don't know if you want to send it to a committee to look at, if you don't, but I don't think it is a priority that we can do this tonight.
Council? I, I think that this is a, I think that this is a really hot topic, and given, even though, as Councilor Markory mentioned, that the public vote, whether or not people understood it or not, it's still like 53, 47, and we've had so many issues that come up under no business, new business, that we didn't vote on on that given night because we wanted everyone to know exactly what we were voting for, and I know, I'm not comfortable right now, just on the fly, throwing this motion out that we're reading from some other town, so I'm going to use my council privilege and just put this off to the next meeting, if, if I may, because I think that this is something that deserves serious consideration, and not something that we just pull off on the fly, that we're going to put a motion like this on, on as a referendum. It deserves a little bit more attention than that.
Are you making a motion, are you making a motion at table? Just point for clarification.
No, he's making a motion to use his council...
Use his council... Next meeting, so that we can actually form, I think that if we're going to call for a referendum...
Understood.
That we should have the proper language that's there, and we don't just do this on the fly, because this is something that's clearly, if we're going to hold an entire forum for hours on this, the motion that goes with it in the formal meeting is not something that we do on the fly.
Okay, the council is...
Now, I know we've used, and I've used my privilege in the past, and there's always been people that have spoke after the fact, and I would like to speak now after the fact.
Speak.
Okay, we just, it, it kind of irks me that we're doing this on the fly, yet we just passed a 6% water increase with less than 50% of the councilists voting, and increased the budget 20%. voting, and increased the budget twenty percent on a project that was ten million to twelve million. That was done on the fly without most residents even knowing what was going on tonight, but the passing ordinance that the vast majority of people just asked for less than a week ago, to pass a motion to ask for a special election, that's working on the fly, it just amazes me.
Okay, under new business, Town Council designates the Winthrop Town Hall--
You wanted to comment?
I'm sorry.
Well, I really didn't, I-- I'm sorry. Yeah. I just, I, my understanding of this is that you can get it on the ballot two ways. You can have, you can get the signatures, or you can get, or you get, the council can vote.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that, I've seen the energy that the people have in the crowd about this, about this matter, and I don't, I think it's a foregone conclusion that they're gonna get twelve hundred signatures. You know, I think that, I've seen how these things happen when you govern by referendum. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm more, I'm less comfortable with that than I am with us voting on a referendum that has already been passed by the town of Situate. You know, I think while, yes, this is a very hot topic, substantively it is, marijuana legalization is a hot topic in town, but whether or not you vote on something is not, in my opinion. I understand that I can't change anybody's mind at this point, but that was what I was going to say prior to it being taken off the table. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
And I thought that the motion, I thought we had discussed this, was to put a question on the ballot to ask the general public if they do want to allow an establishment, or if they do not want to allow establishment. I mean, that's the question. It's not really anything else. I mean, and then put it out to the people, and let's see what the wills of people are. I don't know how much of special wording you need for that motion, but obviously, maybe, well, I mean--
There's a question that came out of the Cannabis Control Commission that you have to use. If your town voted for it, you can't just ban it. You have to go through the process. Towns like we there, the town voted against it, so they could just ban it. Other towns that just banned it, it's because their population voted against it. But since we voted for it, you have to go through a process, and if you're gonna do a ballot question, it has to be the proper ballot question that the Cannabis Control Commission's putting out for us to put before the people. And you just have that on the plan, you really--
No, I understand that, but who puts that, who puts that motion together?
Town manager has to put it together. If he's gonna do it, other than the motion.
Mr. Council President, and I apologize if I'm out of order, please just tell me that I am, and I will keep my mouth quiet.
Can't right now.
Is it possible? Thank you.
Can't right now.
Oh, no, it's fine.
Public comments coming in.
Oh, of course, no, of course.
Any other councilor wishes to be heard regarding this?
Mr. President, I just would like to point a clarification. Counselor Littieri mentioned extending the moratorium, then there's also a verbiage that said there would be a ban on an establishment. Is there a difference in that?
Well, I think, my, my thought was that it would be very difficult to get a special election potentially before the year end, and sort of having a special election in March, I think we would have to ask for an extension because the moratorium we have now expires December thirty-first.
Right.
And I think the AG's office would be more than likely to grant a moratorium with a ballot question being approved than with us just saying we might have a ballot question. I don't think that they would be as willing to extend the moratorium.
Thank you. So that, so the clarification is that if you'd be extending the moratorium, that the question would be to extend the moratorium?
No. The question is to ban it, so you're not gonna--
Ban it completely, yeah.
Yes.
I see. Thank you.
Any further comments? Nick?
Not me this time.
Okay, Town Council designate the Winthrop Town Hall as an early voting site. Let's see, I have a motion for that?
Yeah, that's a state mandate now, to have early voting available. That's Carla, following state law now.
The Winthrop Town Council, in accordance with nine fifty CMR forty-seven dash zero four and nine fifty CMR fifty-one point zero zero, designates the Winthrop Town Hall as an early voting site for the Winthrop Town, for the Town of Winthrop, for the time period that runs the eleventh business day preceding the election until the close of the business day preceding the business day before the election in the year two thousand and eighteen. Do I hear a second on this motion? Second. A second. Anybody wish to be heard?
If we have time to refer it to committee, and we get past it in October.
This doesn't have to be referred to committee, does it?
It's a state mandate.
Yeah, it's a state mandate.
Yeah.
So we'll take the vote.
We have, we've, no, we've been doing it. They just need to designate the site.
I'm probably want to say you can't pass anything on the first time it's brought before the council, unless it's emergencies.
It is an emergency.
It is an emergency.
In the future, I will have some of these things to you earlier, so you're not working under such stringent guideline or time constraints on some of these ones.
Any further discussion on the motion?
So this thing's getting marinated.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Discussion, contract. As you know, the town clerk does not usually have a contract. We have a, an example of a contract that would like to be considered by council, so I would like a motion to refer this to the committee on committees.
So moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All opposed? Nope, okay. We have two. What does--
To take them separately, yeah.
The Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President to appoint Melissa Kaiser from associate member to a full-term member of the Conservation Commission for the term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, or take any action thereto.
Motion to accept the president's report, anyone?
Make the motion, accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Here we go, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President to appoint Matthew Camerelli to the Board of License for a member term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, or take any other action thereto.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? Here we go, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here we go, and so what?
Public comment.
Hi, Kathy, you're forty-nine, welcome to our app. First, I'd like to thank, sadly, only three counselors that have the courtesy to respond, whether, it needs to be a detailed response, but to respond to my email that I sent to the council with regards to marijuana establishments. So I'd like to thank Mr. Littieri, Mr. Vecchia, and Linda Cala for the dialogue that they engaged with me in. I appreciate that. I understand you're all busy, but I would suppoint maybe for election purposes, quite frankly.
Go ahead.
Even just to respond to someone, yes, that you received an email, would be a good idea. I know during election times, frankly, politicians, because that's who are elected officials, are very eager to engage with their constituents. So, again, to Mr. Littieri, Mr. Vecchia, to Ms. Cala, I appreciate the exchange acknowledging my email, so thank you. And again, I know this is public comment, not a forum, but it's, I know there definitely has been cross-talk here this evening. As I mentioned in my correspondence, is there a letter, or I, from right here, there's not a specific form, a letter that is going to be prepared to request from the AG's office an extension on the December thirty-one moratorium? So if someone would want to answer that, that would be great. I mean, so, you know, again, I'm not sure, frankly, if that comes from the council or from the town manager.
I'll answer that. I, that may happen. It depends on how this thing works out. We did, the first thing we did tonight was to refer to the planning board for zoning, to make sure the zoning was in place by January first. If we come to the next Town Council meeting and a question is offered to be put on the ballot, and it passes, then we will then contact the AG's office for an extension.
Yes, in the interim, and I would maybe just, maybe have a discussion, or maybe the town manager with our law firm, and there may very well be a reason to not contact the AG's office prior, I'm not sure if there is, to say, as was stated at the public forum by different people, that we have not had a set, if you will, town manager in place, and that we just charged tonight the planning board to actually be charged with going forward with this and to get the appropriate zoning. I just don't know, it, would it, would it put us somehow in a bad position to make that request? So again, I don't really answer to that, but that's just something that I'd like to put out there. There has been absolute discussion when it comes to the legality of the voting process in the sense of whether or not the Town Council has the right to ask for the special election, or to have a ballot question on an upcoming election. Let's cut to the chase here. We have a law firm on retainer. Ask for a legal opinion, as to the law. That is something that is outside the scope of many of the council members here, certainly outside of mine. Let's ask for a legal opinion, as to what it is. Because I know that I've spoken with different people in the state that seem to say that based on state law and the charter, that the Town Council has the right, without signatures, to be able to ask for a special election.
Can I speak straight?
Yes, and, yes, absolutely.
That's, that's what Jim was trying to do.
Well, I, I, oh, no, I'm, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch on Jim in a second.
Okay. Well, I just wanted--
No, no meaning on what Jim did, no.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is that--
That's, no, no, what I mean was, I am so thrilled with Jim Littieri this evening, that Jim had-- that Jim was at that meeting, listened to his constituents, and put this forward. So Jim, thank you for listening to your constituents and asking for this. I applaud you as a, as a, as a resident, as an activist in the town. I thank you.
I just want you to remember tonight, because there were many other times--
Well, there are. Yes, this council is very vulnerable here.
I'm always afraid.
I'm honest, whether people like that or not, it's all a little irrelevant to me. But I thank you seriously for engaging in conversations with me, and engaging in conversation with your constituents, and putting this forward. Truly, I appreciate your courage. I really appreciate it. On a side note, I also, speaking of Jim, personally, would love to see the legal opinion on the vote that was just taken with regard to the council, with regard to the town center appropriation of money. Because I, I know I've looked into it a little bit too, I'd love to see the opinion on that if the Town Council was ever charged with that. But again, I just, I'm just asking, I do think there was confusion, as I stated in my email to you, whether it's a hollow there or not, the people, when they voted, whether it was for the legalization of marijuana versus a dispensary. So if we could, if we could really look into that and, you know, get all of our ducks in a row, I would appreciate it. But again, Jim Littieri, I thank you.
So just for clarification, just to, so, you know, Michael uses privilege, so it will be heard, you know, the council will vote, I assume, at the next meeting. If the council votes no, the citizens have the right to get twelve hundred signatures. To me, it's, it's a moral, and, you know, I'm not saying I'm the holiest of moral people around here, but to me, it's a moral thing. We built the new town, a new school across the street about, I don't know, fifteen years ago, and we took the time to meticulously tear out a piece of concrete off the old Willis School that said, destiny of our nation depends on its youth. And to me, that's very important, and I think that's why I'm fighting for this so much. The legalization is over as far as the statewide goes. What little piece we can do is to have an establishment on our town, and that's what I'm talking about. Okay. Dotty.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new town manager for having the vision to present to the council tonight, because I think if you would take a moment, right, your neighbor at Suffolk Downs has said the very thing in his planning and developing of the grounds over Suffolk Downs, that they would build a certain portion, and that they would earmark that out to others to come in, in a partnership effect. So I congratulate you for your vision, and I congratulate the council for finally coming forward on behalf of the community. I will, though, now take you to task. We voted for you folks to represent us. We have come before you repeatedly, explaining to you that most of us did not understand the question. We thought we were answering, as our esteemed council member here pointed out, we thought we were saying yes to the state. We never in a million years dreamt that that was gonna take us right down the highway to say a dispensary here and a store over there, wherever you choose to go. And we're asking you, as a small community, and if you really care about the future of this town, it's in your children. And that's the brain that gets affected between the young people up to the age of twenty-four and twenty-five. This is why I gave you some definite documentation, so that if you have any questions at all, you can go on the computer and you can look up and get yourselves educated as to the severity with these youngsters using drugs at an early age. And you know in your heart of hearts that these youngsters, if there is a store, they're gonna partake. But I'm gonna take it one step further. Our esteemed town manager just got through telling you about the opportunities for a partnership to develop the center, to have a growth, to have a new awareness of our community. Wouldn't that be nice? As of January first, you stick a pot shot down there, and then at the same time, you're asking these developers, come in, share with us, build with us, pay to be a part of us. Nice, and then go over and buy a brownie.
Thank you. Counselor.
Peter Gill, precinct five. I object to the comment that this was being done on the fly. I respect Counselor Littieri's passion for this issue. I believe time is of the essence. I respect Counselor Von Cory's saying we don't have the language. I question if the council could not say, we will, we will have a referendum, motion, language of the motion to be determined. In all due respect to Counselor Lucero, had you been at the total forum last week, you might have had a different opinion. Arriving late, being early, you might not have heard all the passion. I believe that this is, time is of the essence. I believe that the council could vote tonight, if Mr. Littieri would withdraw his, his, his right to put it off. If you don't want him to draw your right, that's fine. But I feel that time is of the essence, I feel very strongly about this. I feel that if we just keep pushing it off, it's gonna be like the center.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Don Littieri, precinct two. I'm disappointed that you voted tonight on the center of the business district with no representation from the neighbors or the business owners.
Barbara Savilla, precinct one. I didn't know I could talk about the center and all that. On the marijuana, I think you're misleading people again when you say you're gonna go to the planning board. That zoning is gonna be the zoning that would say, you know, ABC marijuana store has to have certain things. I think what the public is telling you, we don't want it at all. That's on that. As far as the revitalization of the center, I wonder why you can't, I'm very pro-development, and I do think that New England architecture is very unique, and that's what can pave the way for the future to bring people into this town for tourism. But I'm really kind of confused as to why you didn't ask the developers to, you said it's gonna be section by section, why can't they also set aside a percentage of money to go towards the infrastructure? They want to develop here, and why not have them invest section by section in the infrastructure so that we don't have to pay for it? I'm ready to fall off my chair and say, should I move to Peabody? And again, I'll say, January thirty-first, my family's been here really almost a hundred years, and the water bill going up again, I just paid almost, I believe it's twenty-four hundred dollars for three quarters, and now you're gonna tell me again that you're gonna raise the water bill? Get the developers to invest in the infrastructure. And please, think about it. When you do it, think outside the box, so that you're not pushing it back onto the people all the time. Main thing to me tonight is the marijuana-- Main thing to me tonight is the marijuana store. But, you know, just think a little bit outside the box. You're not on the wrong track. You want to beautify. But then, when you even talk about sections of the town, I was here when French Square was done before, and a parking space was 12 feet wide, 19 feet long. We had angle parking, and you took a parking space away, and it devastated. 450 businesses closed in this town over the years. Do your research. And now they have to compete against online. You have to really think about what you're doing to the small town here, when we can be bringing people in for tourism. But you have to have these developers invest in it, and you're talking four stories. We had a house in my neighborhood go in, and it was so well-done that you could walk, drive down that street, I mean, the parking has been maddening, but we won't discuss that. It looks like it's always been there. So think about it. Don't, you have a master plan, is that correct? And when I hear somebody saying, well, it's not going to be perfect, there's going to be changes, would you build a house like that? Your changes, your change orders are going to cost a lot of money all the time. So at the get-go, you do your planning, and do your planning properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you're trying to do a great job.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none. Public Relations.
I want to be heard for Public Relations, because I just noticed Dave Kressman is in the audience, and he is leaving us.
We already recognized him today.
Yeah, I would like to recognize him and say, Dave, for everything you've done, for everything you've done, and-- Thank you for the help you gave Winthrop.
Imagine him coming to this meeting, and it's John Kippa from Sundown. God bless you.
Thank you, Dave.
We did recognize him today at the Department Heads Meeting. We gave him a wonderful gift, and yes, you know, you kind of held things together for us during our search for a new town manager, and we appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
John Munson, Precinct 2. I just want to applaud you guys moving forward with the CBD. I think it's important for this town to move forward. As far as marijuana, it just, it does feel like actions speak louder than words, and you guys may be going against the will of the people by not going forward with the vote. Instead of forcing them to make that 1,200, it seems very clear that they have, and this, whether you believe that weed or should be legal or not, I think the vote that happened with the state was misleading, and I think that it's very clear. And with the time of, is, you know, with the January 1st coming up, it feels like it would have been really good for the town's momentum to go ahead and get it taken care of. Lastly, regardless of what happens with the special election, and whether there's a pot store or not, there has to be something going on with the education of kids to know, just because it's legal, doesn't mean it's safe. It needs to be drilled into their young heads over and over, whether we need to create volunteerism to make that happen, whatever it takes, it needs to be on a vote where we can get the messaging through. I spoke to the school nurse. She has not been approved to speak about marijuana, period. So opioids are, you know, we can talk about those, and they should be spoken about. But marijuana, I mean, this can affect someone's brain on smoke one. So it needs to be, and I don't know how that happens, I guess I'm a little clueless to the state laws that trickle down to the town, but it would be great if we could get it on the planning board's, you know, review, or maybe someone's review of how to get that messaging in front of the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I'm under the impression the planning board's already working on a savvy--
Based on--
Directly.
Start of the season.
Last meeting, it was just started tonight.
We needed to put a motion together.
Why can't we have both?
I just, I just wanted to respond to some of the public comment as far as using the council privilege. And the point of it is to make, just make sure that we get it right. Because as Counsel Vaughn Corey mentioned, that there is specific language that we actually have to use, and it makes no sense, there's no immediacy to do this right now. I'd rather have it done right, and no one can find a loophole. And currently, if, coming to the entire forum or not, currently, there was a vote in town, and that was for yes. And if there's another vote in town, and people say no, then that's where I'm going to vote. But we have to do it the right way. We can't just throw something out there that is not useful.
Mr. Lutteiri, you ran for office as does everyone else.
I'm having a good night. Let's not blow it.
Would you tell him, you all ran for office, and you were able to campaign? If you give us the opportunity, as you are people in the community, and you give us a special ballot, okay? And you give us that chance, don't worry about the 1,200 signatures. We can get on the phone, the same way we campaigned for you folks, we can campaign. And those who want it will vote, and those who don't want, but we'll have that opportunity to say, what is in my town? And that's what we're asking you to do. Just give us that chance. Give us, you can word it any way you want legally. We still have the right to go out and campaign for or against this. Just give us that opportunity.
Yeah, certainly. It's just, if there was a lot of confusion over what people were voting for, we want to make sure that everything is crystal clear--
Don't worry, we'll do a very good job--
And that everybody knows exactly what they're talking about. So--
We'll do a very good job to get the message out.
Yes.
Do we have to wait till your next meeting, though? That's too early. And I mean, it's better if we're talking--
We got boxed in.
Into October. It's getting late. That's the only problem.
I think the question's already mandated by the state. What's there to discuss?
Okay.
We could vote, but language pending.
Can we withdraw his motion?
Mr. President, could we not vote with language pending? With a referendum--
We can't move unless, if the council withdraws.
If he withdraws his--
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Okay. The chair ends the discussion. Public Relations, upcoming events. Nicholas is having a meeting, Precinct 3, on the 24th at 7 o'clock at the PSA Hall. Always a good take. The remaining 2018 street sweeping dates are September 24th through the 28th, and October 22nd through November 2nd. The town council would like to thank all that submitted photos for the town's annual report. There was 50-plus photos that were received. It was a very difficult decision. The first place winner was TK Morgan. A second place winner was Ron Brown, and the third place winner was Tammy Perry. I would like to thank our town clerk, Carla Vitale, for doing an outstanding job once again on that. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Motion for adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.